Uh, on some easels or something. You know this is? Chris. Just a classic old picture.
Where is that?
That's the A B D M D. So this is.
Oh. Nice.
It's just in the, yeah. They they down for it so first reflection. How are you?
Hi, how are you?
How's your hiring doing?
Pretty good, actually.
We just lost the sound, at least I did.
How do you hear, John?
There we go. I hear you, Roger.
Oh, I think they just muted and they.
Oh, they muted it, okay.
They cut us off, so I'm like a ghost, but I can say hello now.
Oh, there you are.
Hello, John and Roger.
How you doing?
I'm good, thank you. How are you?
Good, good. Thought I was gonna make it up today, but I'm uh in the basement.
I was gonna say as it should be, but.
Yes, you're right.
If I talk or sneeze or cough, the dog barks, so maybe I'll mute. Roxy.
How you doing?
I didn't recognize you. Tree close.
Right.
You have to come see the the windows.
Oh, yeah.
They're all done.
Oh, nice. Good for those guys. Good for you, brother.
That's on tree weeks.
Oh, wow.
Never happens.
Despite the weather, huh?
Yeah.
In spite of the weather.
Thankfully, they they just had the interiors left when it started snowing, so.
Nice.
We're all down there.
Where's your space?
Um, oh, yeah, slash. So we just finished the.
Well, yeah, you've been closed for.
Since, yeah, September one, you know, close to get it done, so and now it's done.
What what so did you do?
Um, we installed a curtain wall system around um our two guest wings. Cause we used to have um single pane windows with stand lock.
Right.
Gaskets that were sixty years old and. Now it's much, much better.
Jeff was gonna dial in if I recall, Chris said Jeff was gonna make it, but remote like myself.
Yeah, I I wonder if you're gonna be a little late when we said he had something else. Yeah, today, but.
Okay, how are you guys?
This is about three o'clock, I mean, we're ready, you're gonna give it another minute.
Okay, you said Jeff's not gonna make it, Molly.
I think he is gonna make it, but you might as well be kind of late, is that what?
It was good start.
Was it a try it join virtually?
Uh, I thought he said he was going to join virtually, but. I think we could either start or not.
So let me get the recording going before we start, so if you want to start.
Let me know when you're good, Molly.
We're good.
Okay. Um, we are going to have a uh a public hearing. Popping up on my screen, sorry, we're we're gonna have a public hearing for the first part of our our time today. Um, it's about comments on the um adoption of the wild wildland urban interface code. And amendments to our ordinance, uh, title ten. And um we will, if we have anybody there to give comments, or I would like them to be. Uh, no more than three minutes, state your name, um, address, and then your comment, please. Then Molly, do we have any? Let's start with online, if anybody is online for comment for the hearing.
Nobody's joined us yet, but I did get a message earlier today from someone who wanted to make a comment.
Okay.
I asked, are you ready at three? And they're they're not here yet, so I don't know if I can just keep. Looks like someone else, somebody else just emailed me having trouble accessing the meeting, so. I don't know if we wanna give it a few minutes.
I'll give it a few minutes, maybe turn it over to anybody in person, since I'm not there.
Is that from Logan Page?
Yeah.
Okay. There's uh nobody here in the chambers besides um or UFA is.
Okay, we did get to uh written comments, Chris, is that correct?
Yes, uh, did I not? Did I leave? I only sold one, I sold one now.
There were two.
Um, we. We did, we did receive two written comments. One of them was via the form, and if I fail to pour the other one, I have to apologize. Um, the form is our typical way of taking comments, and so we have a certain reaction. When those come in, um. We did, we received, we received two comments. One um was from Mark Levin, and that is the one that I forwarded to you guys. I believe he is trying to join the meeting to speak to that comment. Um, the other is from Chris and Dawn Page, that sounds like they're trying to join as well. And their comments are somewhat along the lines of um Mark's comments specifically with regard to. Um, this question of whether uh. Of the apparent, um, you know, restriction against construction where you don't have year round access. Um, but you know, it's a public hearing, so we're not, we don't, we're not gonna get into those issues during the public hearing. But I know that um uh UFA is well prepared to speak to that and. Um, so I'll leave, I'll leave that at that.
Once we close the hearing, we'll. Turn that over. Uh, have they been able to join yet, either one?
Not yet.
They, if they intend, I'd hate to, I'd hate to cut them off.
We got one.
One, perfect.
Yeah, so Mark Levin should be.
Well, Mr. Levin, we're we're having a public hearing, as you may know, um, and as I stated before you joined. Uh, if you don't mind, we're limiting comments to three, three minutes uh online, so. Um, we're all here, and I think we're all, we can see you, I assume we can hear you when you're ready.
Okay.
Please, please go.
Sure, just to keep it brief, I've already submitted some written comments that you should all have, so I'm not gonna. Uh, you know, recite every one of those, but fundamentally, I think I'm certainly in agreement. Uh, with the the importance of uh considering and de-risking uh the wildfire hazards. In the uh Alta area, I think in a general sense, and as a public commenter, I'm. Very supportive of the idea of using uh fire resistant construction uh materials. In new construction, uh, being able to uh streamline uh any perceived obstacles to. Landowners doing a uh good job of uh fuel load reduction around their uh premises. I think those are good things, but uh as I indicated in my comments, there's a couple of concerns. One is the uh provision about uh, you know, prohibition of. Construction in areas that are not served by year round access. And in those comments, uh, you know, I've indicated that I think. Uh, and I know Chris has said that there's probably some workarounds, I think it would be helpful to at least acknowledge the uh. You know, that an exception can be made uh when there's adequate mitigation for. Uh, you know, that's acceptable to the uh fire authority having jurisdiction. Um, and I've listed some potential measures that might be reasonable in connection with that. Uh, a good fire protection engineer probably could list others. Um, but um the other uh, you know, big thing is uh, I think that beyond adopting a W I. Uh, code, which uh with some minor changes is probably well and good. I think it's important to think from a big bigger perspective in terms of realistic emergency planning. Thinking about, you know, you don't wanna wait until the day comes where it's a hot July and you have a fire. Uh roaring like a blowtorch up from the bottom of Little Cottonwood Canyon. In a situation where uh emergency responders can't even get up highway two ten. Because it's not safe for them to get through the fire, and they would become entrapped if they went up up there. And so you're left with no responders, no way for people to get out. And basically, you know, that's kind of even worse than a situation that was happening in uh. The California Pacific Palisades Fire, at least they had ways to get people out of there. If that happens in Little Cottonwood, there's no exit. Um, Big Cottonwood, you know, uh, obviously has Guardsman Pass. As an emergency egress, but Little Cottonwood right now has nothing. So, you know, it is time to think about what what do you do the day that that happens, if it's uh. You know, some July afternoon next year or ten years or or twenty years from now, what is the plan and what could be done? And uh starting now to think about how to make it so that that's not a disaster. Anyway, those are just some comments, uh, uh, if I've got a second left or two, uh. Little bit concerned about the provision that uh would appear to allow some authority to uh. Go into any uh premises at any time to uh ensure compliance with the code. Um, there's obviously some concerns there. Um, and um that seems a little authoritarian to me. It might be reasonable during the building permit. Uh, construction process where somebody's getting inspections and sign off. But once you have completed construction, I don't think uh, I don't think that's reasonable. And um anyway, that's a short summary of my comments, and I appreciate the opportunity to to chime in and. I'll listen in as you guys uh continue.
Absolutely. Well, thank you for your your comments and your time, uh, and your efforts. Do you might, uh, I don't know if I we caught it, could just state your name again for the record?
It's Mark Levin.
Thank you.
And it it's showing on the screen too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay?
Very good, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Uh, anybody else join online or walk into the room?
You just have another person join the meeting, I'm not sure if they wanna make a comment, but if if you do. Um. If you're in Zoom, you can go to the bottom and hit the raise hand feature, and then they'll allow you to to speak. Looks like it'll be over in just a minute.
I didn't see in the hand. No.
Oh, it looks like they declined the request. I'll send it again. Yeah, Logan, if you would like to speak, um, accept this request in Zoom to become a panelist.
Like we're trying to connect there. Hello? I, you're trying, there you go.
All right, now now perhaps you can hear, can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, I'm gonna start by introducing yourself, please.
Oh, great, okay.
Hello.
Uh, s- sorry for the delay, I had a little bit of trouble signing on uh Logan Page. Um, and I appreciate the time, and I was a bit late to the meeting since I was struggling with my uh technology, so. Uh, apologize for that. Um, I wanted to reach out um and just uh kind of piggyback, so uh. Speaking a little bit uh on my family's behalf here, but uh they're out of the country, and so I know. Uh, they had submitted some email comment, uh, but I just wanted to make sure. Uh, what was submitted uh made it to you, that would have come from uh Chris and Dawn Page. Um, but uh my one thing that I wanted to make sure came up in this discussion of wooey. Uh, uh, and and I know uh they shot this in is um. Obviously, it will require some adjustment to town code, um, which is fine, and and I understand that. Um, one of the things that I was a bit concerned and and, you know, I guess us cumulatively, my my folks and I. Is um the concern of uh year round access where their place and a an additional lot there next to their place. Is uh, you know, up in in the uh, in that Grizzly Gulch subdivision, so year round access for fire. Is uh a little bit of a challenge. Um, Chris did respond to their comment uh saying that uh i- in other instances. Um, it seems the international fire code allows for uh there to be exceptions to that. Um, when building something. Um, as long as there's alternative measures that provide an equivalent level of safety to fire apparatus access. Uh, most commonly in in a home or something would be a sprinkler, so again, perhaps this has already come up. Uh, as I was late to the meeting, but I wanted to uh encourage that type of verbiage. When you're making other adjustment to uh town code, uh for that verbiage to get laid in as well. Um, to protect uh landowners and and homeowners if they wanna make. Uh, structural improvement to existing structure or build a new uh home on a lot. Uh, that there's that type of verbiage that gets laid into the code to allow for uh. For them to be able to, you know, manage that fairly easily through the process.
Okay, very good, thank you. Um. Anybody else join, Molly, or anybody else walk in? Just wanna make sure we're.
No.
Okay, well, very good. Well, with that, um, we'll need a motion to close the public hearing of uh. Wednesday, the planning commission for Wednesday, October twenty second, please.
John, was there another um written comment that um? We missed here?
No, I did forward that comment yesterday, um, and we don't typically read those into the record. It was a comment by a member of Logan's along the same lines about the access restrictions and the UFA is gonna speak to that.
Got it, okay.
Yeah.
And John, we do have another agenda item on the public hearing before we close it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you're right, thank you, thank you. Um, good reminder. Um, so yes, the second agenda item for the for the public hearing is the uh. Uh, changes to title ten, chapter one, section eight, uh, has to do with noticing. Um, we did not get any comments on that, if I recall. And I'll allow anybody online to weigh in on, to give, provide public comment on that issue. Which is in the packet. Okay. Hearing none on that, now we'll take um uh entertain a motion to adjourn our our public hearing of October twenty second. For the planning commission.
Still moved.
Made the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Maren. All those in favor of closing the uh public hearing, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right. Um, let's go to our regular meeting um for the Alta Planning Commission, again, October twenty second. Um, sorry to miss the drive up there today. Um, let's uh. Is there anybody would like to uh open a comment as far as the planning commission goes before we start into the uh regular agenda items? Okay, hearing none, let's go to the uh, let's go to the minutes from September twenty fourth. Um, anybody have any edits, comments?
John, I wasn't sure what your first question was regarding.
No, the the uh about the minutes?
No, previous to the minutes, what were you asking?
Oh, public, just public comment.
Public comment, gotcha.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Nobody in the room, yeah.
Yep, yep, right. And so now we're on to the minutes. Anybody care to make a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Can we have a motion? Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the September twenty fourth, twenty twenty five meeting, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Uh, minutes are approved. Let's go to um. Uh, uh, the discussion of alternative amendments to section nine dash three. Uh, Chris, I'm gonna turn it over to you and and uh. Um. Molly, for a while to introduce the 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 next three agenda items, please.
Okay, uh, so. We actually let you know with um before the meeting, we don't actually have, we we didn't wind up with. Anything to to discuss on this next agenda item, uh, in the meeting last month. We talked about the range of amendments we could make to. Um, the vegetation, the town of Altus Vegetation Management Ordinance sort of made way. For the Wildland Urban Interface Code and acknowledged that. Um. The lowest hanging fruit was to um just create an exception for uh, you know, exception to the tree removal. Restrictions if fire code official requires trees to be removed to satisfy the wild. Um, so that's what the proposed amendment does. On the other end of the spectrum would be a more sophisticated, you know, of of. A bigger setback from our existing vegetation management ordinance. Um, we found a couple examples that seemed like they would work, they're just sophisticated enough that they. Sort of had tentacles throughout the throughout the rest of the town code. Um, so we are working on um a draft. Of some languages that based on the town of Brighton Vegetation Management Ordinance, I provided this to it last month. They're just weren't ready to discuss today, and that's maybe for the better, because it might confuse matters a little bit to have two alternatives. Um, up for discussion, but only one, you know, packaged up in an ordinance for um for adoption, so. Uh, we are working on that. Uh, we do need. A uh, a vegetation management ordinance that addresses other topics besides perfectly trees. Um, but we don't have one yet, so we don't have anything discussed on that. So I think that does give that agenda item, uh, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Could I ask you something about Chris, or something about that, what you just said, Chris? Was. Did did I understand you say that um? A homeowner is exempt from uh having to plant new trees. If and only if the farm official um objects to it. As opposed to the homeowner can clear trees to um. Provide a a fire break if if the homeowner feels that's warranted, whether or not the. Fire official says anything.
That's a good. No, I think you you're kind of asking a few questions and um. What should we, should we like formally move on to discussion of possible action to adopt um? This ordinance?
Yeah, let's do that, I think we can.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um. Right, this is discussion of possible action, uh, on a recommendation to adopt the WU code. And establish the boundary uh by adopting ordinance, the ordinance with amendments to co titles eight and nine. Um. So Roger, you ask a good question and. I think your question is essentially, does this ordinance apply? This, the ordinance, the title of the ordinance or the code section in town code presently is. Uh, preservation of vegetation during development.
Wow.
Um, so. Whether it applies to tree removal outside of. An an active building permit or a construction project, what do you think about that, John? Builder.
At first, I didn't think that it did, but when you look at that, it says like, there's something in there, I don't have it right in front of me. During, you have to have approval to take out any trees during construction or basically at any other time. And the mayor does it for a single family homes and the planning commission does it for commercial, conditional use permits.
So, um, yes, should be a lawful for any person proceed with any development or remove mature trees within the town without. First, I consider this site plan and attending a roadside land with respect to vegetation. Um, so I don't wanna say it doesn't apply and you can just cut trees down willy nilly, I don't think that's. Um, the intent, the intent of the regulation presently is not to allow that. Um. Any thoughts, Molly?
Yeah, so I'm just trying, so I just wanna be clear, so we are not. I kinda got a little lost. We had cha- we had proposed changes to title eight and title nine. That had to do more with the trees and all that, and then are you suggesting, Chris, we're not doing that now, right? We're gonna talk about that more at length later, because we did put an exception in there, but I don't wanna go down that rabbit hole. If we're not, um.
Yeah, yeah, I did, I I guess just to speak to the exception. You know, the the major change to the vegetation management, vegetation preservation of vegetation during development. Ordinance, which is our vegetation management ordinance, um. Is essentially just a new section under, um, a new subsection under nine, three, three. It says the requirements of this removal and replacement section shall not apply to defensible space requirements. Of the Wildland Urban Interface Code as adopted by the town, so I guess I would offer that. Um, amongst other reasons to update this. Section of town code is that we need it to, we need to have a rule about when you can cut trees down. And this, this does not make it entirely clear what one can do outside of a construction project. The Brighton code section is titled Tree and Vegetation Protection, so right there, it applies. Um, and it says the removal of trees is allowed under the following circumstances, so. It's not, and I know from having repeated it the last couple of times, it doesn't just apply to um during construction project. So I would assume the town intended to limit tree removal when it adopted this ordinance um in nineteen eighty nine. Or whenever that was, uh, and I would assume that going forward, the town would adopt a. Uh, a vegetation management ordinance that doesn't just allow carb launch to their gut, um, which. If it doesn't, you know, if it doesn't allow, if it doesn't disallow it, it doesn't allow it, is what it would seem to be.
Well, one other thing, Chris, is I did suggest language, um, G as well. That says, you know, that we, that the town um would approve a fire protection plan. So there is town oversight over whatever. Plan people wanna do, but I do agree that F is kind of more expansive. That if someone wanted to meet the requirements of defensible space, they're kind of, they they could cut down trees. And so, um, I don't know if we wanna get into that now or just, um. I mean, we could also narrow it and say, um, that they need approval. So that they're not just doing it on their own, just to make sure that what people are doing. Does actually comply with the wooey requirements.
Well, let me, let me put out a scenario here, which I'll just make up. Um, I'm uh contemplating building a home. Um. There's, there's tree, there's trees nearby, which uh, the fire official says. It's okay to leave them there. But I, the homeowner, I'm uncomfortable with that, because um, even though the. Fire official says it's okay, I'm a little worried about them. Can I cut them down without approval?
I don't, I think this, I don't think that would be allowed into this, uh, the way this ordinance works now.
Well, then, should I be able to cut it down without approval, I guess?
I I think it's probably.
It becomes pretty arbitrary, though, Mayor Roger.
Uh arbitrary on.
On on your, on on calling it uh the the identifying risk, is it real or not, or if if the.
Yeah, yeah, well, it's a judgment call, clearly.
Exactly, it's.
And um. And indeed, the fire officials' judgment is probably more informed than mine by a long shot. But uh I mean, I can also see how in the scenario I've just laid out. It's a means of getting around the uh. The the prohibi- prohibition about cutting down trees. But um, okay, well. I'm not hard over on this, I'm just trying to look for some sort of uh. Concerns.
I think it's, I think it's a good question, um never really thought about this much, but. Philosophically, if you own your property and fee simple absolute and. You have to deal with a town or municipality about whether you cut down trees, I think that's a little troublesome.
Um I s- I see what you say, I just know it's a common, like, like cities regulate. Cutting down trees, you know, and so.
I think people cut down trees all the time.
Of course they do, um of course they do, I just.
But another, another. Potential scenario is we have these ten proposed new lots. And let's say they wanna graze all the trees for aesthetic reasons. Yeah, economic reasons.
Yes, the project's much easier, that's why every home spolos is all farming soon, they've got nice cowards on. Anyway, so I it would seem to me to be prudent to have, it's like if Rogers, well, if potential applicants, you know. Um sense of comfort in constructing a home on a lot with trees comes from clearing it. I would, I would assume it would be consistent with the way the towns looked at in the past. Not to allow the lot to be cleared up.
I guess, Chris, I'm not sure that there's, I think you were reading this, it shall not be unlawful, it shall be unlawful. Uh for any person to proceed with any development or remove mature trees. Within the town without having first submitted a site plan and obtained approval.
Yeah.
Site plan.
It doesn't say a site plan.
It doesn't have to be a valtry, it just says or. So, I mean, that's backing away from what Paul was bringing up, just whether or not it's clear or not how you can cut down a tree.
There you go, John.
Is that, is that clear, Polly?
Yeah, that makes sense, yeah, no, I see that.
I'm trying to find the spot, so.
Nine, three, two. Eight.
Right.
Or remove mature trees.
Or just blanket remove, like that, if that was their only action.
Yeah, well then, uh we need a site plan and we would probably issue an excavation permit and. Uh ask UFA to to approve it, if it's a defensible space project. I don't know what other grounds, if someone wants to come in and cut down trees for aesthetic or economic reasons, I don't know how we would. Take that into consideration, other than. I mean, if we were to approve it, I guess we would, you know, we would have to do this tree replacement thing.
Well, I, right, generally, what I've seen in a lot of codes is that they don't want people to. It's okay to cut down a tree for defensible space or for certain things, but you don't want. People just cutting down trees because it blocks their um view shed or something, they wanna see. You know, Devil's Castle better or something like that.
John, John Goldner?
Where's my hand to take down? One quick thing related to what Paul said, I mean, in the vegetation ordinance. Uh we consider, the town considers trees to be a resource, a valuable resource that needs to be protected. So that's, that's the basis for, no, you can't just go down chop down trees, we've had a number of people that did wanna chop down trees. Just to improve their view, they could build their house, it wasn't in the way, uh everything is fine. Um so I guess the answer that I had is depends on who the mayor is, because if it's a single family house, if they can convince the mayor. That there's a good enough reason, then it's a go ahead, but so far that hasn't happened. And anything else besides single family is up to the planning commission.
John, what about uh diseased or dying trees, does that just? Is that, is that probably gonna confuse the issue here, or if it's germinated or not, but.
It might confuse the issue, but, well, dead trees? People call up a lot, people had called up a lot and said, can we take this dead tree out, and it's like, yes, please. Otherwise, it's gonna fall on your neighbor or your car or whatever, so that one we just did. Disease trees, maybe we fudged it, maybe we made a mistake, it hadn't happened too much, but if people called up and said. We have an obviously diseased tree, can we remove it? Um the office would just say yes, uh I don't remember if we actually checked with the mayor on that. Um and what was the third, what was the other one?
That was it.
Yeah.
This is, I mean, it's not a new thing, but it's become more of a thing in the last decade or so. Sort of um speaks figures like it for itself up here compared to other, you know, locations of the region and. It's, you know, so it doesn't look like we've got a safe forest up here the way it does in.
There's definitely some around that are close to houses and things too, we've had a couple over there that. Have blown down in the wind and they were beetle trees, you know, that were mostly dead.
And you don't necessarily wanna just chop ours down, I mean, there are certain protocols follow. When there's a disease, we're not really qualified to rely on those, um I don't know if we're sure. That the wild crew knows a thing or two about.
I mean, I think it's probably lies in more with poor service ones related to forest health.
Yeah, that's something we could consult the forest on, although they don't typically have a role in plan review or. Want to come to, but, you know, I haven't heard a call about, hey, I've got a six tree on the property, um. I would, I would just point out that one change we recommend here is that the mayor not provide this approval and that the building official do it. Going forward, um it's just. Though the mayor doesn't do plan reviews, the building official does plan reviews and, you know, for a bigger project like a commercial development. Um or for all other developments, um other than a single family, the planning commission, you know, we're not changing that. So, um for single family. Development, I suppose for a site plan, I had a single family, I'm really excited. I don't know how that would work if, you know, a hotel wanted to cut down a tree, would they have to get the blank commission to approve it? Like by submitting a site plan, I don't know. I'm not sure, and I think if I can just say something related to that, I. Um I'm not sure if you, what John is saying for single family homes, if it's the mayor or if it's a development, if it's the planning commission, but if you. Are saying that this is going to now um reside with the the official. If that's the fire official, um I'm not sure that this is something that falls into. Uh what we do is is our fire prevention specialists, I'm not sure if they do. And I, they certainly do plan reviews for building specifics, but I don't know if they've taken account vegetation. No, this, so this says the building officials should provide the approval, and I think the way that it would work. Would be for an application to come in, they've got all these materials, including a site plan. They're gonna show UFA the site plan and the UFA is gonna say, you need to do these things combined with the WUWE code in terms of defensible space. And the building official is gonna approve bill per only if demonstrated. That, okay, that's um. And satisfied. Okay, that makes sense. Or or inspecting the field to ensure lines or. Makes sense, so.
Chris, could you bring us back then as far as where we are, so we're on a.
Yeah, this may not be on target, but what's the answer to the comment about you should be able to access it except when. Yeah, do you wanna speak to that?
Yeah, sure, um. I think, you know, Mister Levens and Mister Bejus comments.
Sorry, could you, sorry, yeah, could you introduce yourself, thank you.
Yeah, I'm Jay Torgerson, I'm the Italian chief with Unified Fire Authority.
Thank you.
Out of town liaison board of fire authority, um great questions, uh. The WUWE code does stipulate year round access, however, there's also stipulation within the WUWE code as well as international fire code. Knowing that you can't have a code that fits everything, so there are allowances that a fire official can make. Based on um access, based on road grades, uh. A lot of different variables that would allow us to say, yeah, we know you don't have year round access. So if you're going to build or you're going to remodel, um because you don't have year round access, then we may require a fire suppression system. Or um a water tank within your building, so for example, um. The lodge on top of Hit Peak, when they redid that or when they built that, they were required to have a large reservoir of water. Fire suppression system and pump that could feed that in order to suppress a fire if they have one. Same thing in Watson Shelter, they have the same type of system there, so. Anything that's currently in an Albean Basin or Grizzly Gulch or those areas, um that's currently there, they're not required to do anything different. If they do remodel or if there's a permit or or an application to build new construction. Then, you know, our goal is not to restrict that, we want to help facilitate you all with what you want. Or your communities, and if that's to to add residential structures or to add developments, we will help assist with that. And we'll look at all of those variables, so access, road grades, water supply, all of those things, and come up with. Proposals that will allow people to build. That address the public safety or address the issues of of making sure that we can suppress fires. If we don't have a road that allows us to get a fire engine in there, then we may say, you gotta have a sprinkler system in your building. Or you gotta have an alarm system, or you have to have a fire pump or something that will address that safety issue. We wanna help you be able to develop as you see fit as a community, um so we'll. Work through the process and and make arrangements or allowances to to developers in order to do that. Does that make sense?
It does, but I'm not, maybe I misunderstood the comment, but I got the impression the suggestion was was that. After the project is done, you'd still have the capacity to go on the property at any time you wish.
Yeah, I I did hear that as well, and that we. We would never do that, um we we do inspections down Valley and up here as well. Where we maybe do a residential inspection only if it's for somebody that rents it out. Um we don't go into private residents and do inspections um after the. The building is finished and completed, there's a final inspection that's done, but that's it, we don't ever go into a. Private home or residence after that to do an inspection.
So were they misunderstanding the language or is the language?
So I think, I think you're, you might be speaking to the sort of one of the latter components of uh Mister Levin's comment.
Yes.
And um I'm not dug into that too deeply and I can't swell. I have noticed that in the WUWE code. My, so I haven't thought carefully about it, my sense is that that does not permit. Um access to the property at all times, it's specifically be during construction, but I don't know if Polly wants to open on that one.
Well, I was looking when the comment came up, and I mean, some of this comes from the WUWE code itself. So, you know, there's a whole, there's a section in the WUWE code, let me see if I can pull it back up. Um that allows for it. I might have moved around as we were talking about other stuff, so um. Defensible space, um. It's section one oh seven of the WUWE code. And I mean, as, I've never heard of that, of it happening, I think it's just. You know, they have it in there, all can. Oh, and then it just says all construction or work for which a permit is required shall be subject to inspection.
Can I ask, Polly, don't let me cut you out, but I have a, I have a follow up.
Okay, but it does, it's, you're allowed to inspect during construction or work related to a permit.
During construction.
And then whenever necessary to make an inspection to enforce the, any of the provisions of this code. Or whenever the code official has reasonable cause to believe there exists in any building, so that's reasonable cause. Or any premise, any condition that makes such building or premise unsafe, the code official is authorized to enter such building. To inspect, I mean, that's kind of, so if they had reasonable cause to think that there was a leaking. Gas tank. You know, they could enter into the building, I think we would want that.
Or or a, or a cabin that's, it's, you know, we've had a thousand inches of snow instead of nine hundred. And we have homes collapsing and we are going around red tagging properties that are structurally unsound.
Right.
And that exists outside the WUWE code for, like, building officials, zoning officials, you can always enter on any property. Um in the course of your duties, so maybe the lady was copying that.
And so, I guess that brings me to a a sort of a question I have that I. Have had in response to these comments we've received, and we also had a comments in the council meeting earlier in October. About the access issue, um we're adopting the WUWE code. Um at this point, mostly because we're compelled to do so by the state and um we need, are also compelled to adopt the. IBC and the fire code, this is the state instruction code and more political subdivision of the state. Do we have, this is mostly a question for Polly, do we have authority to amend those codes?
Yeah, other jurisdictions have um amended parts of the WUWE code. I think if we're going to do that, I would recommend that we adopt it. Before the end of the year, so we don't risk losing sta- or, you know. As was discussed last month, and you know, there are severe penalties for not having the WUWE in place. Um but if there are certain things that you want to amend, we can look into. The scope of of what we are allowed to amend, I I guess I'm. Speaking a little off the cuff, I haven't looked exactly at what the state code says as to that. But I do, I have seen numerous other jurisdictions that have made. Slight tweaks to the WUWE code.
Polly, are you saying that we could adopt now and then amend later at our leisure or?
Yeah, we have to put, we have to put it in place by the end of the year.
Right, I don't know if we have time to go back and forth on any nuances in making adjustments, that's my opinion. Between now and the end of the year, given our meeting schedule and what we're up against. So I'm hearing amend, uh adopt now, amend later, in a nutshell. Okay.
I'm, I just cuz I'm online here, oh, you're online too, I'm seeing that Jeff has his hand up.
Oh, sorry, Jeff, go ahead.
So my understanding from last uh meeting was that if any amendments. Cannot be more lenient, it would have to be more restrictive than the WUWE code, is that correct?
I, let me look into it, I I guess I'm just going off of what I've seen. Like, I've looked at Park Cities or Summit Counties, I was just looking at earlier today. And they had quite a bit of changes, and I didn't look at it to look to see. Um, you know. They have certain, like, they add remodels over fifty thousand dollars, I I'd have to cross reference it. And they added some definitions in Park City, so I'm not exactly sure. But I suggest that we, i- if you are interested in making some amendments to the WUWE. Um we can, staff can definitely come back, let you know what the scope is. Of those type of amendments and give you some examples of other amendments of other kind of fire. Uh other similar towns or cities.
I, I. I think what Ca- what Cameron was saying last month. Sounded very similar to what I have often heard about town of Alta regulations, which is that we can be more.
Sounded very similar to what I have often heard about County Alta regulations, which is that we can be more restrictive than the state in general, but if there's a state statute that our authority flows from. Can be less restrictive or specific. Um, so. But this, of course, is. It it's it's, you know, international, it's the international building code, so. Um, I guess it is, however, just a regulation of the state that we carry forward and apply to the affiliate, and so. May maybe it's similar, but Polly, I got the.
And I agree, Chris, that that is a general and and Jeff, that is a general premise, right, that you can be more. But I think there are some tweaks I'm looking at with like Park City, like they exempt historic uh. Buildings. Within the historic district, I don't know if there's an exception in the code or how they how they address that, so. Um. You know. Anyway. If that's something that. That you guys are interested in, we can, we can look into it more.
Municipalities should be very careful trying to be more restrictive than the state because that can cause the state to. Um. Uh, remove the municipality's ability to regulate something.
Oh, I don't think for WUWE, I'm not so worried, I mean, here we're just talking about making things more. Um. Fire resistant, right, or. Tweaking the laws around that, I I don't think the kit states, well, who knows? I never know what the state legislature is gonna do, to be honest.
I have a question about, um, so that's kind of putting the WUWE code within. Our code that's. Specifically about new development, how does that then translate to current? Existing buildings, like are we putting it elsewhere in the code to?
Um, yeah, remodels are subject to building codes. Um, you know, by a plain reading of the building code, it's essentially anything but paint and carpet. Um. You know. Practically speaking. Projects occur. That are more than paint and carpet without building permits, but. Most of the time, if you call the town office or some other permit counter out of city and then they ask if we need a building permit, we say yes. Um, unless it's paint and carpet and a couple of other narrow things. Um, but. A lot of what occurs in a. Even a even a. Um, a big expensive interior remodel would not trigger. Uh, the WUWE code. Um, I mean, WUWE code is mostly about. Um, exterior, you know, construction materials on the exterior, home hardening, um. The access obviously is a big topic, defensible space. Utilities, um, fire flow, that sort of a thing. Um, so for for a lot of remodels, these provisions just won't be triggered. I guess is what I would say. Thank you, Chris. But if but if you're expanding a structure. Um, or significantly changing the use inside an existing structure. I just don't know, it's it's sort of like we try not to opine on. Projects until there's an application, but for the, yeah, does that make sense, like a new structure certainly has to comply, some significant remodel that changes the habitable area to.
Yeah. Well, we had talked about, you know, buildings that are. Potentially high risk and how they may get fees under the WUWE code, but there are ways that. We can maybe lessen those fees by becoming. More compliant, so. Well, like, you know, talking about the trees and how that's an exception for a building that exists, they're not remodeling, they just wanna. Lessen that fee, is that something to take into consideration too? You know, how we talk about it.
I just, I don't think there's any things in the adoption in the WUWE code that is gonna get in your way, you seem to, you know. Comply with the recommendations from both this, you know, risk assessment program. I really don't. Um, do you want to talk about the WUWE area? Should we talk about the WUWE area? Um, just to just to get on the record, the proposal is to include all of Alta in the WUWE boundary, like we heard some. Commenting reasons why from UFA last time. Um. I don't think that that's gonna have any effect on. Property insurance or really anything else, I think the bigger factor in that is what does the state risk assessment? Uh. Find in our designation of WUWE boundaries, independent, if that makes sense. The state has its own risk assessment that it is doing in areas regardless of whether. The locality is applied in WUWE code. And that is the information, under HP forty eight, the insurance providers may only use. That. Information or may, or they have to use that information. Um, so. I'm I'm pretty sure they all consider Alta to be high risk already, and that's why insurance is is tough. So I just, I just don't think there's anything we'd be doing right. Including the whole boundary, just like right in Immigration Canyon, um, that hasn't already occurred. If that makes sense.
Is that boundaries setting a risk level, or it's just defining what the jurisdiction is for WUWE code?
Yeah, it's it's just defining where that this section of the what is central building code will apply, so that's all about that. There may, you know, I guess I imagine like like the Holiday and Bottom Heights have a WUWE designation.
Within UFA's jurisdiction, uh, I think that there were only three municipalities that did not have any kind of. WUWE area, it was Riverton, Taylorsville. And. Maybe Midvale, I think those were the three. And outside of the Jordan River corridor, where there is some vegetation. Um, that may fall within. The guidelines that are not areas that can be built on anyway, so. You know, those are the three municipalities that that we're not going to have to adopt this.
And thus, does it have a WUWE area?
Yep, yes.
So presumably, I look at Hills and Kings. Ever, King's Hill. Um, yeah, those are.
In Godman Heights.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
So essentially, just the middle part of the valley floor. Is is an area where they didn't have to worry about it, everywhere else, um, has areas that there are at risk.
You think that forest dealerships in the WUWE? You know what I'm talking about, yes. So.
Okay. So I'm hearing. Uh, again, bringing it back, we're, we do have a deadline, we have. Um, it sounds like if there are some issues, we can be, we can come back later. Um, and whenever after this is adopted, assuming it gets adopted. And make adjustments to become possibly more stringent, but very likely not less, pending. Polly opinion at the next meeting if need be. Uh, but that makes sense to me, actually. That would be. Amendments to make it more stringent, not less. Um. And so we talked about the area of coverage, which is, we're assuming is gonna be the town limits. And, um. Is everybody, do we want further discussion on the nuances of of the actual? What we're gonna recommend? Is everybody?
Chris, I was gonna add that. Similar to other parts of the building code, we can talk with the AHJ. About AMR's, which is sort of a alternative means and methods. That language is also in here, which you were talking about just as four oh five, I think you, I was read it. It's kind of heavy for everyone to read this kind of a document, you know, being. In the building code a lot, I still struggle to just churn through it, but anyhow, that's, I think that's where it is, um. More crystal clear is that you you can do something like a fire protection plan that would allow you to. Meet it in an alternate fashion, let's say if you're not have access twenty four. You know, seven, three sixty five, that kind of thing, so. Just to reassure us that we're not. Totally unreasonable if there are pathways, and I bet if we established a precedent for that, because there's so many. Houses that could fall into that, or maybe not a ton, but some more that could fall into that, um. Category, there would be probably a group path that people could kind of take this same. Justification for alternative means.
Yeah, I I think that sounds right, uh, you know, another way I've been. Thinking about these comments and responding to them is that the WUWE code isn't. Changing anything when it comes to access, because the provision already exists in the fire code, and we've been issuing building permits for the construction. They don't fly off the shelves up here, but, um. You know, move on, there is a, there's a new house, uh, up in Grizzly, it's a rebuild, but they had to go through the building code, just like a. Um, you know, totally green field lot wood. So.
Um, I've just got maybe a question for Polly or others, is anybody? Or is anybody aware of other states, um, looking at adopting or mandating evacuation plans, routes, very specific? Studies, plans, routes, you know, California passed that, I think, three years ago. That I, I don't know what size communities at county level or city level had to develop. Evacuate, formal evacuation plans. In in in, this is germane to. Some of the comments we got. Is anybody aware of any, any other states?
My understanding isn't, you know, is that we have to have a emergency. It's, I want to say it's a CE. I'm trying to remember the acronym.
DE, no.
C.
A rescue national plan. Yeah.
Yeah, C E M P. Like, we have to, I know that we have emergency management requirements.
Right.
And. I would. I haven't looked at them for a while, so I can't remember, but I can't imagine the evacuation plan isn't. Involved with that, but that might be just a good reminder, just where it is such a high priority for the town. That we can just highlight where that is or what that.
I think that, I think that'd be, I think that'd be good to occasionally daylight that to the to the res- to the community personally. Because if I remember right, we had talked, and John G made this is for you, didn't we have at some point a discussion about? Like a rendezvous point was gonna be the Albion parking, the parking lots or something like that during? Extreme events, wasn't there somewhere that's documented?
We did talk about it, we've talked about it a few times, and gold miners and, um. Upper parking lot were great choices, but nothing was ever formally done.
Okay, okay, this is more common sense at this point, but that's. I don't want to, again, cloud cloud our our action today and just, uh, uh. Bringing this up, we may want to be a little more formal in the future, something to think about in future years, not. Let's not. Obscure the deadline that we're up against today, please.
John, I think what you're talking about should be part of a comprehensive emergency plan for the. For the whole town. Not just what the evacuation plan is, but. You know, in the event of some other catastrophe.
True.
Uh.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that it, I think it's C E M P, the comprehensive emergency management plan, so we can. Uh, as you've said, we can let you know what that is in terms of wildfire, what we've adopted and also. Daylighting that for the community to remind. Is never a bad idea.
I think that's good, I thank you, I think that's good. If that needs to be updated, I don't know if there's a state office of risk management or the Forest Fire, uh, Fire Forestry Lands has support for for updating that, but that's that's another discussion again.
I think we locally do it, um.
Okay, okay. Okay, um. Where are we as far as, um, and moving forward, everyone? Are we? Is this, are we ready to talk about action, one, is it two, is it two actions, one for the, uh? One for the approving the, recommending the area, and the second one is for the amendments?
It's actually one, it's all, it's all encompassed in that same code. And the only question, based on your conversation. That might suggest an amendment is for that F. Do you want to, um? Exclude, um. Requirements for removal and replacement. Um. Based on for defensible space requirements. So do you want to allow people to? Implement defensible space on their properties without getting any kind of approval from the town? Or? Do they need to? To go through? The town's existing process to deal with defensible space?
My quick opinion on that, that's up to the commissioner, fellow commissioners, is. I I don't like the arbitrary, the arbitrariness of that, I think it should be, uh, an, uh. More official process who defines what the defensible space is. Not left to the eyes of the, uh, of the beholder, to be honest, but. Others may have a different opinion, Jeff, go ahead, yeah, I'm sorry, I see your hand raised.
Yeah, I. Yeah, I agree with you a hundred percent. Because, you know, somebody may just use that as an excuse to improve the new shed as well.
Exactly.
Um, so I think there should be, you know, at least submit a plan or a discussion with the officials to review, here's what we're doing and why. And this is how it improves defensible space.
Yep. Thank you. Anybody else have? Opinions on that, thoughts?
I agree with that.
Okay.
That means we keep it as is in the proposal that you wrote up.
Yeah, and, you know, eventually we'll. Consider, uh, you know, a bigger redo of our vegetation management ordinance, and that would be the opportunity to. You know, create these other pathways and. Still a lot to do, so.
So Chris, to be clear, you would, so if they wanted to exclude that, then they. Then a motion could be to adopt. What's that?
At least that's, sorry, what I'm hearing is that we don't want to make any changes to this right now, is that? Correct?
That's correct.
Okay, you want to leave in F. Set nine three dash three F.
Yes, so that the, so then, other, otherwise you have to satisfy. To cut down trees that aren't required for dispensable. Defensive space under the WUWE code. It just satisfy the vegetation management ordinance as it exists. But you can do defensive space work. By submitting a site plan. Per Dave Abraham's, um, daylight, but that. Um. The way that that first section of the ordinance actually reads. Um, or the second sentence, I suppose. So, if you're. Doing developments or otherwise seeking to remove mature trees, you have to submit a site plan. And if you want to submit a site plan. That shows trees being removed for defensible space, we would run it by the fire department.
I would recommend that you amend this to remove. F. So that there's no confusion. Of that applying. Because right now, the way that F reads is. That, that, that five nine three three doesn't apply, which includes the mature tree definition. If it app- if apply, that it doesn't apply for defensible space, and so I think that there might be where those two provisions. Conflict or could be interpreted to conflict, I would just want to take that out.
I see what you're saying, I I agree, it's just, it's just clouds, clouds the issue.
I, but. I guess I see where, I see what you're, I was slicing you, Polly, but. Guess I just feel like this was the whole point of this amendment and like this section F was. The point of the amendment and. Um. I I guess I feel like without it. It's just, it's gonna be black and white, the. The vet, the Town of Alta ordinance is gonna say. You can't, you can't cut down the trees and you gotta plant trees on the property if if you do. And UFA is gonna say you gotta cut down those trees. And. Um, because the the WUWE code says it, you've adopted the WUWE code. So. I I wonder if instead of removing F, we just. Tweak it so that it's clear. You have to get approval.
Mm hmm.
To cut down this for defensible space.
That's basically what we're saying.
Okay, so you could, we could amend it to say the requirements, um. Of this removal and replacement section shall not apply to defensible space requirements of the WUWE. Um, so long as a site plan is provided or. Is approved by the building official, so long as.
Uh, yeah, like, like as provided in section nine three two A or something like that, like nine three. Yeah, like, like as provided in section nine, three, two, A, or something like that, like nine, three, two, A provides the process already. This just makes it clear, like section F or some version of it would make it clear that the, the removal and replacement requirements don't don't apply if it's for defensible space and you get a fire code official to sign off on that.
Okay, so you need to amend that. Do you want to make a suggestion, Chris? You seem to have something in mind here.
Let's.
The requirements of this removal and replacement section shall not apply to defensible space requirements of the Wildland Interbasement Code as adopted by the town. Property owners seeking to remove trees for defensible space shall submit a site plan or review by the building official, which would mean UFA in this case. Period.
So I would put in so long as the site plan is approved by the building official or something like that.
Okay, so.
So long as, so you just tack on to the end, so long as site plan is submitted and approved by the building official.
So long as a site plan indicating trees to be removed is submitted and approved by the building official. The requirements of the replacement section shall not apply to defensible space requirements of the Wildland Interbasement as adopted by the town, so long as the site plan indicating trees to be removed is submitted and approved by the building official.
I think that covers the approvals. So that's nine, nine, three, three, F as amended, so. Good. Thanks for that clarification, everybody. How does the commission feel? Are we ready for a motion on this as nine, three, three as amended? Nine, three, three, F? Or do we?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favoring as far as the amendments as, and as amended on nine, three, three, F of the proposed WUII code, aye?
Aye.
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 Thank you. All right, thanks. Good discussion and very helpful. Good things, good things were daylighted as well. We have the next possible action item on the, on the notification. Has to do with newspapers not being the best source of notifying things anymore, I believe. But Chris, I'm gonna turn that over to you for title, the Title X discussion and I got, I got a feeling this won't take a lot of discussion, but could be.
Yeah, so I don't think we had addressed this as of last month. We did preview this with the council. It's best, certainly best practice most places, especially Alta, not to get ahead of the council with these, these changes. Especially when it comes to something as important as the regulations that govern essentially our transparency and the public process. But we have stumbled into this provision in Title ten, dash, one, dash, nine, and hearing publication notice before amendment that requires the town council to hold a public hearing and provide at least fifteen days' notice of the hearing and post that notice in the newspaper circulation within the town. None of this is required in state code, the state government requires, when you commission that with the public hearing about the council, you're not proposing to remove that requirement for the council. But we are proposing to shorten the, the time period notice deadline, the notice time period deadline from fifteen to ten days to match the planning commission public hearing timeline, because fifteen days is a long way from a long way from a meeting, especially when you only have about thirty in between meetings. And then also remove this requirement to post a notice in the newspaper. That's not it's not required. I don't believe it's required for true taxation notice is required to post it in the newspaper, but I'm not aware, which is probably the greatest of the taxes, I'm not aware of any other requirements posted in the newspaper. There is no such thing as a newspaper general circulation in Alta, as far as I'm aware. Can you get, can you get a Tribune at the block?
I don't know. Used to be every get the New York Times. That stopped a couple of years ago.
They weren't delivered to the lodge?
Right, and we, we would post in the Times if we probably so, but like, you've only posted nice. Yeah, yeah, right, so.
You know, it's a very small newspaper now.
The Times. Yeah, well, the Tribune in the, in the desert news posting will notice twice a week, so you have these like it's, there are several there are several points on the timeline you have to follow in order to satisfy these new two posted requirements. So for so many reasons, we just want to take that out. And, yeah, so I don't, this shouldn't be controversial, I don't think, but it's sort of a cleanup that we have stumbled into it and that's a problem because of that a couple of times recently, so.
Okay.
Of course, in order to enact both these land use changes, we, we, we have, I believe as of today, posted a notice in a newspaper circulation for public hearings under number twelve, but there's this other.
And we had a public hearing with no comment.
All right, so there's another provision that Polly pointed out is just inconsistent with what statute says about who has what authority when it comes to land use applications. This ten, dash, one, dash, eight. Section B, appeal of denial. Zoning amendment applications denied by the planning commission made the appeal to the town council. The planning commission doesn't make the decision on the, the zoning amendment application. They make a recommendation and the council can take it or leave it. So nothing in this section changes that. It just sort of obscures the process, the way the process is actually supposed to work under state law, so. I don't, it's, it is interesting, Polly, it says that should the town council find merit, the appeal of the application shall be remanded to the planning commission. It just sounds like kind of.
It just doesn't, I don't know, you know, I always look at the Alta code with the lens of when it became a town back in the, was it seventy? Two, seventy? Seventy? The county code was quite different, land use code was quite different. And so I think every once in a while we find like a legacy paragraph, but that, that section has always befuddled me because the planning commission does not deny zoning amendments. They don't have that authority, so let's just take it out. I mean, the council, under the state code, has the right, if the planning commission made a recommendation, the council wants to remand something back to the planning commission for further discussion or whatever else, they can always do that. But we don't.
Yeah, so it's that we're the, the council's ability to remand this to the planning commission, which I remember we did once with the basic facilities on ordinance, I'm sure John will remember that. But there's another reason why the council can't remand a zoning amendment application that's been recommended to the council and council says, no, we don't want it to be this way, but the council can ask the planning commission to have more discussion or reconsider some aspect of it. Right?
Absolutely.
Polly, how does that work with the last sentence of part A? Says any such amendment shall not be made or become effective unless the same shall have been proposed by or be first submitted for approval, disapproval, or suggestions of the planning commission.
So state code does require the planning commission to make a recommendation to.
But that doesn't say recommendation, that says approval.
Yeah, it should say, you're, you're right, so should be for the recommendation of the planning commission. Instead of able disapproval or suggestion.
So the town council may from time to time amend any zone new regulation of identity district or districts or zones or any other provisions of this title. Any such amendment shall not be made effective, made or become effective unless the same shall have been proposed by or first be submitted
For, that's okay.
To the plan, to, for a recommendation. For.
For yeah, you could say review and recommendation of the planning commission.
Yeah, I, I, I get your catch, Dave. It's good.
Yeah, that is good. Thank you for catching that.
Okay. So we have a, ten, dash, one, dash, eight under amendments, section A. We just made those modifications. Then we have.
That seems like a big change in land use code. However.
It's just as comporting to what the state code is now. I mean, the state has, I, I can't speak from nineteen seventy to two thousand and five through two thousand and five. I wasn't a land use lawyer until really two thousand and five. But there was a huge revision in two thousand six, I believe. And and then there's been a lot of revisions since then. So this, these changes follow the state code a lot more closely. And I was trying to look, I think it was back in twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen that they also removed all the newspaper, all the noticing stuff, so, you know. That's very cumbersome for staff. But these changes also are just confusing because they're totally different than, they're illegal by the state code standards.
Okay.
So we have our role. I'll say our role is more, more clear, is clarified here with Dave's suggestion. Thank you. And then we have the part on ten, dash, one, dash, nine about the notification, time period, et cetera.
And I'll just, I'll clarify that this is the planning commission's specific role in the context of the land use regulation or amendment to land use regulation, but the planning commission is the land use authority on certain matters such as review of a site plan for anything other than a single family home or vegetation management, for instance, setback, approval and all manner of other things provided specifically in the code, but land use regulations are legislative. And the town council is the legislative body, and so you're just required to apply your expertise to those proposals prior to the town council taking action.
Correct. Given those changes, or do the commissioners feel we're ready for a motion for ten, dash, eight, or ten, dash, one, dash, eight and ten, dash, one, dash, nine? Can we do that all at once? Does that need to be too separate?
It's in one ordinance.
It's one ordinance. Okay, very good. We're clear on the text, text adjustments on the second part of A, I, I, I hope I am.
Yeah, Molly, did you get that?
I don't have it in writing, but I'm confident it was sure clearly reading.
Yeah. Okay, great.
All right. Are we ready for a motion? To adopt this ordinance change?
I'll make a motion to propose changes.
All right, there's a motion for amending Title X.
I'll second it.
All right, very good. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Marin. All those are in favor of the change, adopting and the changes to ordinance twenty, twenty, I'm sorry, ordinance Title X, as discussed, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? All right. Thank you. Good discussions again. Good, good catch.
Did you say aye?
I did not say aye. I'm still pondering this a little bit.
Oh, okay. Any, any opposed?
Well, you're with the change. I guess I did not see that part of the edit in the packet. I'm diametrically opposed. I just am not certain about the, the, the change and what does that mean? So it's all Polly, you're saying that there's no change pragmatically to how events would pass through for a, a, a land use or a rezone or something. This wouldn't change our process.
No, state code requires all land use regulations to go to the planning commission and for you to give for the planning commission to make a recommendation, whether it be positive, negative, or neutral to to the council. So this doesn't change anything to your process.
Sounds like it's modernizing the language.
Yeah. Do we need to re-vote? I can.
You can just vote now if you're.
Aye.
Yeah, all right.
Does that work, Polly?
All right.
Yes, that works.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Good, good, good clarity. Let's see. Any new business before the planning commission?
I think since I missed our last meeting, Jeff Meemeyer is now in possession of a titanium hip. You want to say anything about that? You're muted, Jeff.
Yep, so far so good. You know, not too bad during the day. Not too good at night.
Oh.
So, but it's only twelve days out, so.
Oh, okay.
Are you ambulatory?
Um, yeah, I can walk. So.
Good. That's great.
Yep.
Right, you're up and at him. It's good to hear.
And. Quick question?
Sure.
I believe we have these topics on the agenda for the November council meeting. Chris, do we need to adopt the minutes from this meeting before then?
Do you need to adopt the minutes from tonight's meeting? No, no. I don't think so. You can provide a draft. I know it's because of the timing, the council meeting's going to be before your next planning commission meeting. You can just provide draft minutes.
Okay.
That's fine. And I was also, oh, go ahead.
Well, the official record is the recording too, right?
Yeah, I, Cameron kind of talked about that. It's, I, an antiquity, the state code says the minutes are the official record of the meeting, but we have advanced so far in the last twenty years where before it was, you know, a little micro cassette, that I think in all practicality, the recording is the official record. Despite.
Okay.
That, so if there are any questions, we can always go, you know, people can go back and listen. And I know a lot of the council members do listen to your meetings, so.
Well, if
Good.
if there is a discrepancy between the recording and the, and the minutes, I mean, I realize it shouldn't be, but if there is which is, which prevails?
I think a court would just probably evaluate both and just have the minutes and then there would be, you know, if someone litigated it, which is kind of where it would come up. You would be, you would have a transcript of the meeting itself. It, it's, that question has not been addressed. But in my experience, to my knowledge, that hasn't been addressed in. But in my experience, I, to my knowledge, that hasn't been addressed in Utah case law, law. But in practical experience, it's going to be the transcript of the actual meeting, not. Minutes of the meeting. If there was something very, um, you know. That happened at the meeting that had, that was substantive, you would listen to what happened at the meeting, not. You wouldn't rely on the minutes.
Well, that's why it's like the, the most important content of the minutes are the actions, the record of the action.
Right.
So you, the attorneys in the room would know much better than I what, what there would be to litigate over. That's not the action taken. Maybe it's. Every character on the page or every sigh and, uh, chubbing.
Yeah, I mean, and I can start going off on, there's like one jurisdiction I work with. They don't, they just basically do the action and I find their minutes really frustrating because they're useless. It's like they discussed the Wui Code and it's like, that doesn't help. When you, you know, if you don't wanna sit down and listen to a meeting again, um. It does, you know, so, anyway.
Okay, all right. Let's talk about the, our next speaking updates and meetings and all that. Right now, we're scheduled for the twentieth of November. Uh, no, I'm sorry, the nineteenth. And, um. We, we beat our deadline by two months as far as what we were, our task with Wui, thank you. Way, way to go. Maybe a new record, not sure. Um. What do, what, uh, Chris, do we have, uh, anything pending possibly on the twentieth? Or did I say the twentieth? I keep saying the nineteenth. Nineteenth.
There's nothing that's formally in the hopper, but there may be, I mean, there's always a chance that something comes in that we are required to. Convene to discuss or take action on, um, there's, in fact, one such topic I'm aware of, whether. Whether it comes together at the time, I don't know. Um, so.
Let's, let's hold, let's hold the date. Obviously, let's hold the date open, uh, pending, um, communication from staff. As far as any agenda items. We had talked about. Getting together with Mike, maybe, was that December? Our December meeting? If we have, if. Okay, let's stick with the December, let's stick with those two dates, um.
What is the December?
It's Christmas Eve.
No, it's not. It's seventeenth of December.
Seventeenth, all right. Let's stick with the nineteenth for now, if, uh, pending. Um, any word from, from staff and then the seventeenth, um. Pot- potential, uh, site visitor, uh, site review, let's call it that, ski about.
And can I just, one other kinda update for you, just, you're probably all kind of, um, following it, but also at the next. Uh, town council meeting, uh, there will be a vote for, on the Schrontz estate. Um, per the request of the developer, they pulled the ripcord. Um, so they wanted a vote, um, so I just wanted to let you know that that will be, um, considered at the next meeting.
And what date is that again, Polly?
Uh, it is November.
Twelfth.
No.
Twelfth, yes.
Uh, Polly, is, do I understand correctly that, um. The vote will be either accept or reject without any possibility for modifications?
Um, no, well, you can, uh. Grant the, their proposal, you, the council can deny their proposal, the council could. Uh, grant their proposal conditioned on certain things, um, or. Also, the, um, applicant could waive that. They're pulling the ripcord and stipulate that, um, there's more discussion.
Wait a minute. Say that last piece again, the applicant.
The applicant, the developer could say, could say, wow, there may be, you know. That, well, they could say, you know what, we, based on your conversation, we wanna give you more time to work through this.
Okay.
But they would have to stipulate to that. The town is, um, required to make. A decision unless they say that we don't have to.
Okay.
And how does the planning commission's conditions fit into this dialogue?
Uh, the council has, uh, all of your conditions. They saw your minutes. Uh, I think they considered them pretty closely. The developer. Had a chart of ones that they were okay with and things that they were not okay with. And so ultimately it would be up to, um. The council, whether or not to follow the planning commission's recommendation, although I will say. That at that, at their last meeting, the council, you know, really gave the planning commission. Um, you know, a lot of support and kudos of saying that they, they acknowledged what, uh. Thorough job, uh, this body made and consideration of the application. And they did not seem inclined, based on the last meeting, to not follow. Um, or that was a double negative, but they seemed to want, they wanted to follow the planning. The planning commission's recommendations were important to them and they thought it was important to follow those conditions.
All right, thank you. Well, thanks for that heads up. I may dial. It's, that's gonna be live streamed, I, I assume.
Yes.
Yeah, that might be, uh. Good for all of us to certainly be aware. If we can be there in person, that's probably even better. But, um.
What time is that meeting?
Four o'clock.
Four o'clock, November twelfth.
I don't know if there's a work session or not planned, but the official meeting is at four.
All right, thanks for that heads up. Well, good. Um, so again, dates of the next meetings, we have those penciled in, uh, but not, um, pending, uh, topics. Um, I think seventeenth of December we'll stick with, nineteenth is more tentative. Um, and with that. Uh, I think we're done for today and thanks again, everybody. Is there a motion to adjourn our planning commission meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right. All those in favor of, uh, adjourned our session, our meeting, aye? Very good. All right, thank you.
Have to consider that.